Okay, it's July 1st, 2019, 10 o'clock. I call this meeting to order. Roll call, smile.
Here.
Pam.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of last meeting on June 24th, 2019. Any additions or corrections?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Number five, discussion possible action regarding the following permit, sim gas and select interview.
Okay. Select is D1? Select gas, I think there's two. Yeah, 297.
Mine is a road cat, North Capital. And I'm going to assess that.
Yeah.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, mine is a steel natural gas line between section 20 and section 34. Now, I think it's going here between this section and this section.
In those quarters, within the same section?
Well, no, I think this is where it's got across the county line or section line. Is, say this is a section, these are the four quarters. So it's crossing there.
But he only put the one in.
Yeah, I mean here, but here.
I think it was there, there too. Yeah, they just put 34, I think.
Okay.
Just to make sure, yeah, that's all he put. So I didn't know.
County Route 250. Okay. It is evidently they're starting in section 34. Southeast.
I'm thinking around the Saturday. Probably had a little muddle with that search table.
I don't know, he can cross them. Oh, it's a border. Well, I guess I'm not.
Four of them, oh my God.
Big, you did.
Yeah. Little ones, yeah, they were just a quarter of yourself.
I'll make the motion to approve this sim gas deal in section 342917.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Number six, discussion possible action regarding the use of courthouse lawn on August 17th for lights over out.
Hello.
I'm Mr. Alex.
Hi, so requesting use of the courthouse lawn for an event that we had last year. We're having it again this year. It's a welcome event for Northwestern students and we had a huge response from the community because we had a band and outdoor event that we opened it up to the public. And so this year it will be open to the public. We have secured two bands, Panhandle Dirt and Josh Malloy. Josh Malloy is a Northwestern alum as of last year who has a red dirt band and we're excited to have him. So we will be using the lawn, we will be using bleachers, I've already secured those, encouraging lawn chairs and blankets. We'll have food trucks, so we'll be doing a road closure on that. We'll have the porta potty. We've spoken with police and EMS about the event and wanted to let you know so from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, we're going to have Northwestern students doing a signing so kids can come out and have autographs with the athletes and they'll get free snow cones and then at 6 o'clock, we start the bands and we'll be doing that till about 10 o'clock, so.
Mosquitoes aren't biting, right?
No.
And that's on a Saturday?
Yes, this year it is on a Saturday. We did Friday last year, but we had a lot of response from the parents actually moving students in on Saturday that they would like to attend the event as well. So, and hopefully we'll get them to spend the night, another night and stay in the community. But it's a community-wide event, again focusing on the Northwestern students and getting them acclimated to our community, so.
Very good. I make much will approve.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Better on than this one.
Number seven, discussion possible action regarding OEDA group request for payment for Rule 1 District number three.
Yeah, so they brought this by and it's got like all their invoices that they're paying right now, which is, they asked for $50,000 early, getting $5,776.68 this time.
Oh, that's just what they requested.
Yeah, requested right now.
For payment so far.
Right, and then they just attached the.
Okay.
And so I don't know.
I'll make the motion.
So they'll eat and stuff.
I'll make the motion we approve it for.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Looks like it's for their radio equipment to redo the meeting. Number eight, discussion possible action regarding resolution yearly renewals fiscal year 1920. See attached resolution 192001.
Okay, so.
That's a big one?
Yeah.
Do we just need a resolution, one resolution, or do we need to sign all of them?
Well, we'll have to sign all of them. You could do, you could sign that resolution and you could sign all of them here in a little bit if you want me.
Okay. Well, that way give us a little time to go through it and see if there's any additions or corrections that.
Yeah, that I can.
Aye.
I don't remember your name. Sorry.
I'll make the motion we approve the renewal of these contracts and then I'm relatively sure there will be some that got forgotten.
More, yeah, there's going to be more.
Later day, but the ones that are listed on this resolution anyway. Look at second.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
And then that one was next.
What's that word, number 45, right there?
Yeah, that's the next item.
What's that word say right there, number 45? This and crap?
That's some crap, yeah.
That's our elevator.
That's our maintenance out here on the south.
Bison crap, I don't know.
Bison crap. You know, well, me too, I couldn't see him getting stolen.
I think they did the elevator purge in the, yeah.
Bison crap. So just sign that top one and then the next one behind is in that one.
Yeah, we'll do it next, but I've got a different sheet first to sign on the other side.
Oh, okay.
That was the second.
No, we don't have to sign yet, we haven't approved that yet. Just that bottom. She's got a different one for that second one anyway. Discussion possible action regarding approval of the Health Department annual contracts for fiscal year 1920. Attached resolution 192002.
Now on the back of the paper too?
Well, it's, it's right here, this resolution. With the Health Department.
Yeah, that's, uh, that, go back.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, right there, that's the Health Department's contract.
Yeah.
This is just what they have contracted for their.
Right, and they, they get out of war money and.
And they paid, they paid for this.
Their money pays for it, but it has to go through here.
Right, right, okay.
You guys get with it?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make the motion we approve it.
Okay, I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Number 10, discussion possible action regarding resolution detention contracts 2019 to 2020. See attached resolution 192003. I think most of these were approved in prior meetings already, it doesn't just be an extension of those.
Normally you get more of those, so I'm sure we'll have some more coming in because that's all we got this year.
All right.
Usually have that.
I'll make the motion we approve these ones, they've already been approved.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye. That's number 10?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. On the detention stuff?
Yes.
It's on the back. Isn't it amazing how much cheaper the one is than the rest of them?
I know.
Probably not, probably got a box and a bed there.
Old camper.
Sat on. Okay, number 11, discussion possible action regarding resolution 192004 to direct the treasurer to reverse the election for personal service general fund account pursuant to Title 62, Section 335 of Oklahoma Statute.
And this is something we just do every year, so.
Yeah, if it's statute, not really.
John there?
Yeah.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 12, discussion possible action regarding the 2019 employee personnel policy handbook.
And that's just showing us, every year we've got to do this and I'm sure we'll have some changes after, I mean.
They were saying something about it, wasn't this guy?
Yeah, so we'll probably have to do it again, but.
Well, you had some things.
We'll just, I guess we're going to just approve that we've got one essentially and with claims to revise it to get.
Yeah.
The updated or something?
Yeah, the updated with officers approval and changes of their discretion, so.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
I hope Shelley's listening better, maybe, I'm not sure. We're all much over the channel.
I took notes.
Okay, number 13, discussion possible action regarding the certificate municipal orders to county clerk and county treasurer, charity bonds filed with ACCO, Ralph Alfa Lane, Dooey, Harper, Major, and Louboutin County.
What's in theirs?
These are all adjoining counties and what does that mean, those charity bonds?
Um, it's something, David, it is, it's, he has to have these charity bonds with them.
Does this have something to do with overlapping deal of the school?
Districts, districts.
Districts, yes. And just use.
Like school districts and stuff like that?
Well, if we go into Alfalfa County, I think we send them some of our tax money and back and forth, it's the difference there. If Alfalfa County comes, school district comes into Woods County, we send them money and if we go into Alfalfa County, they send us tax money back.
And so you just sign the top one or something?
You got a second, David?
Yeah, second.
On favor?
Aye.
One, two, three.
Sign.
I do. That's it, front page?
Uh, there's about eight of them.
Oh.
Eight front pages.
One for each county.
Yes.
Shelley, will you make a little note on something?
Uh-huh.
Uh, part-time help, I need to talk about my part-time.
Okay.
Too much for the ball, right? At six, how many six? All right. Three plus. About what JP weighed when he was growing? Are you kidding me?
He's a big boy now.
He had a person behind him. Yeah, he weighed up for it. Little license.
Okay, number 14, discussion possible action regarding the order of appointments for reappointing board member Bob Ferth and Todd Hallmere today of our regional rail department org.
I'm not, I'm not trying to do that.
Section.
You guys is the guys, isn't it?
All right, yeah, but it's got to have all his approval, I don't know, but I think Todd was an at-large when it started.
Was Bob the one, the pipeline?
Yeah, yeah, he was the CEO for Alice previously.
No, he quit it.
No, he replaced last, who was Mike Wayne.
Right.
And Todd, Todd was an at-large, so I'll second the deal, David made the motion. On favor?
Aye.
members to Woods County Economic Development Committee.
She'll send that to me.
Okay. All right, Freedom is me, Winoka's Alan Poe, Alba Kay Decker, Winoka's Sandy Olson, Freedom, Matt Tucker, then Alba, talking about Hannaford, McCone, Jeremy Eaton.
Jeremy too?
I've never heard of some of them. Well, Hannaford, Matt Tucker, I don't know this Jeremy Eaton exactly.
I mean, isn't that, uh, your little board meeting that you got?
Oh, yeah, okay, here, yes, I do know him, I guess I just didn't know him right now. He is assistant superintendent at the vote tech.
Oh.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The dude when Slater moved up and so, okay.
I'm good with all that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number 15, discussion possible action regarding the order of appointments of new members to Woods County Economic Development Committee.
This one is now.
Oh, then the.
Industrial, there you go.
Oh, I see, industrial. Okay, which I'm Secretary of Treasurer, so I guess I assigned this, but the members are Rick Cunningham, myself, Steve Klein, Connor Martin, and Richard Dryerson.
I'm good with that also.
No, I don't. That's the second.
All favor?
Aye. Second, him first, right?
Yep. That's okay.
I was the first my whole life.
15, man. Is that what we're talking about, 15?
Do I?
15?
Is that what we're on?
I was 16.
I was 16?
Those are the two, that, this was industrial, were you? Number 17 is the one we're on now, discussion impossible action regarding the May 2019 detention charge, claiming the amount of $120.
I'll make the motion, accept that.
I can't even tell where they went to. Guess it doesn't matter.
Which one?
16.
17.
17.
On the detention.
Okay.
You made the motion?
Yeah.
I'm trying to look to see where they even took them.
Garfield.
Garfield.
Garfield County.
I'll second.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
We need a contractor?
You're the contractor. I got, forgot to tell Jennifer to come down. Maybe that's her. Hey, nope.
She got a little time.
Okay, she gets, we can get through her six months.
Yeah.
Okay, number 18, discussion possible action regarding bid number 181915, six month bids. Okay, I guess I'll start this off and you guys can follow suit. I want to accept all the little bids from all vendors listed on this sheet and with Litzemberger Construction bids number one on the truck. Which I think is, and those little bids are, how do I need to say this, within consideration of transportation, with transportation included.
Okay.
And the reason for that trade, there are some rock bids from Western Aggregates that's down by Oklahoma City that by the time you put the freight on it, they don't become low bid.
Yeah, they're a little cheaper on rock, but it'll cost us so much to go down there to get that cheap rock, we could save money by picking that sack for them.
Right.
How do you spell Litzemberger?
Litzemberger. Get it?
Yeah.
That's the one I want to pick too, same as Randy, low bid. My first choice will be Litzemberger trucking. Be virtually the same as Randy's.
You can get a second on yours.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay.
I'll second.
I will.
Okay.
What they wanted us to do is pick a vendor on each one and we have, we pick with low bid, with, that vendor will be listed, all of these pages are going to be listed in the paper to see what everybody's bid is. We'll use low bidder for that item.
Okay.
And they're already listed, so there's no need to redo it.
We'll just, and I'll just, what I'll do is put this in our minutes.
You pick Litzemberger, this is your first choice, okay?
It'll be a big one this time.
You can either.
Right.
Oh, and the same.
We need to put this back.
Oh, right.
Right, right, still doing second, third, wouldn't be two, one, yeah.
There you go.
And then document I, and you go second.
That's just one.
That's the only needed.
Well, how David's going to do.
This is one you'll need to see for me. Okay, David.
I'll accept the same as Randy and John and I will use Rose for my first choice.
Maybe.
And then trucking.
Okay.
You can stamp this one in what I'm going to do, Shelley's.
I'll get a second.
Yeah, I'll second, here, all favor?
Okay.
Let's put.
Two, three, yeah. Very good. Awesome.
I think that's.
I'm more of one.
That way, this is, you stamp that one.
Right, they're the first.
Yeah. He was busy.
I got anybody else.
Here, you get Bob, Jim.
Here you go. This is our master copy. And all we did, all I did on that back page is write D1, D2, and D3 under Litzemberger and D1 under Rose on the belly.
I'll leave a copy, definitely.
I got a copy already.
Oh, and just go ahead and mark, you know, after the date.
Okay, number 19, discussion possible action regarding the used dump truck bid number 181917.
Still got the bid here.
95, going to double pay here. That's a big old tractor, isn't it? 95.
Big tractor.
John Deere?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I went out for bids on it. Used dump truck, only got one bid back, Mr. Anderson Trucks, $59,500 for 2007 Mac and I'm going to move to accept that bid today.
Second. Sir Max a lot.
Should be in my yard.
You're loving the stain.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is that all, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know.
Do I?
I got two or three sheets going, so I don't know where to land. I'm on fourteen on this one, eighteen on that one.
Well, we just finished eighteen.
Yeah. Uh. So they're both wrong.
No, we did.
No, we just made a motion, did Randy, you seconded it, or I seconded?
Yeah, he seconded it.
We're going to tone it now.
Okay. Yeah. And I guess this is for nineteen.
Is that really what they were wanting there last year? Yeah, or, or, you know, on the.
That one we approved last, uh, last year's, last time that we went over this, it was to finish up that fiscal year, this is for the new fiscal year, the request, and we hadn't got it ready.
Number twenty, discussion of possible action regarding your old fire equipment request for nineteen twenty, that's the year we're in now.
Right.
And I don't know, your request totals forty-four thousand four hundred and twenty bucks, was the first I'd seen this, and I've really been looking to.
I am.
To see what, I mean, we just spent a thousand on equipment.
Wowzers.
They're eighty-two hundreders.
Package, shell, that's bunk gear, bunk gear. It's all about ten grand bunk gear in each one of them. Tom Catr, Freedom, thirty-seven hundred. Uh, it's, it's all bunk gear, I mean, it's all.
Very forceful.
Life-saving type stuff, huh?
Very forceful, from first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I said we'd make the motion.
Okay.
Gosh, that hurts, but I'll do it.
Seven, I mean, I second. It, I suppose, started to say that takes a pretty good hunk out of there, seventy-five.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. But, anyway.
I guess.
I'll lie. I'll lie.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I don't like it, but I'll do it. Got half the stuff. Kind of surprising, grass fire, that'll rid.
Exactly.
Fireworks. humidity seventy percent. Biggest ranch in the county, got the kids playing with bottle rockets.
I thought they outlawed it.
Well. They probably are now. Build your own.
I didn't know you could even buy it, that's the reason I said that.
Yeah, a little drive.
Discussion of possible action regarding the old distributor truck bid number eighteen, nineteen, eleven.
Eighteen, nineteen, eighteen.
Oh, boy, eighteen.
That's okay.
Another wrong one, yeah.
Only got one?
I got one.
Well, I keep it simple, I like it simple, right?
Yeah.
Don't have to do much studying.
Dan, you got one? Yes. There's a note.
Huh?
There you go. How much is it?
Forty-eight thousand. What's it on, what is, what is it? It is a, uh, two thousand five-stirring L, seventy-five hundred chassis, for forty-one thousand miles. Got CAT C-seven engine, two-ten horse, hundred eighty-nine wheelbase, thirty-three thousand GBW, blah, 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 blah.
What's a distributor?
Two thousand and five entry, is that how you say it, whatever, entry, Centennial distributor tank, twenty, uh, two thousand gallon, twenty-man hold. Blah, 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 blah. How long the bar? One spray bar, extensions, doesn't say, hose and one, one-foot spray bar extension, twelve-foot spray bar.
It's an Attnair, isn't it?
Attnair, yeah, two clues, fourth box, blah, 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 blah. I will accept this bid, since it's the only one.
Okay.
I'm making a motion that I accept that bid.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, thanks.
Third, number eighteen, all the little pages that I'll be on the meeting notes for next week.
How much, yeah, I was supposed to say that.
It'll list all the bids. Because when we, when we don't use low bid, then we go to the second low bidder, if they're not available.
Right.
Like if they don't have some iron.
First choice, second choice, it's really, it's just a ticket.
There's not many bids on there besides the rock and stuff.
Yeah, they're the same price.
They're mainly two bids, two bidders, but just pennies difference in the price of iron and stuff like half a cent.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Was the difference between low and next bid, and there's only two, so that, that first one might not have it available. So we have to go to the second one to get it, but we accept, and the first one we're gonna call is the low bid.
Right.
And you try and list all those in the minutes, I thought it'd be easier just to run that as an argument. Because otherwise it's gonna. That's gonna be a, it's a long just.
That truck's automatic. I just wondered, I didn't, I was gonna ask, yeah, I forgot.
It's gonna be some things.
Does she got it? Oh, it's all right.
I know, a bunch, couple of times a year we have to do that, so.
Three hundred and eighty-six.
How many?
Thirty hundred and eighty-six.
Hey, I'm nice to you.
Look what she did, she put it all on Excel.
I'm telling you what.
So you don't have to sign three hundred and eighty-six times.
You get ice cream, right?
Yeah, you get ice cream, all right.
Okay, any news?
I don't have any. They worked like it's gonna be a while, it seems like, huh? That red tape, yeah.
Lot of it on the rollers?
Well, it just, it's just that kind of stuff, I guess, you know, it's gonna take about a year, I've been.
Governmental, yeah.
You know, hurry up and wait, kinda deal, or something, is what it is.
Yeah.
That's all right.
I don't have anything else, I, so. Newspaper got any news?
Five-speed manual transmission.
Okay, number twenty-three, current discipline, why it perps tour.
Been drawing on one deal, I mean, let's approve it.
Before she changes it, all in favor?
I'll second.
All in favor.
Hurry. Aye.
Aye. Although we will have to sign all three hundred and eighty of those POs.
Yes.
At some point.
Yes, you will.
You still have to be there.
Not today, right?
Aye, not today.
Can I sign two of them?
You have to sign three hundred and eighty-six of those.
I'll get the other after my walkabout. I'm gonna go on a walkabout this week, you might never see me again.
Number twenty-four, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.